Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission for Thursday, December fourteenth. Current time is four thirty P M. May we begin with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm so used to doing that, I wasn't even on the agenda, but all good. Do we have any public input? No, I'm gonna say none. Any correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-four Public Utilities Commission meeting schedule.
I can do it.
Okay, so any discussion?
If you guys want to start earlier, I could make it here probably by three thirty for most meetings. If you guys decide you want to start early, I could do that. But you guys.
I'd be pumped in it.
Sure. All right, thank you. Yes, you know you're.
Yeah.
So if you want to change them to fifteen thirty, I could definitely make it.
Okay. I'd be okay with that, so um, all right, so I will, I will amend my motion, if that's okay. I mo- I move that we approve the two thousand twenty-four meeting schedule with one amendment, and that is the time of the meeting beginning will be at three thirty P M. Instead of four thirty P M. So a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All right, so I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, can carries? I move that we approve the meeting, that it's for the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty-three, for a second?
Second.
You'll be extending, standing in the center? Any discussion? I uh, I'll actually use this opportunity now because it really was a place on the agenda. I don't know if everybody knows, but we have a new member in the room today, or not a member, but a new person in the room. Our new town attorney, Melanie O'Brien, thank you for being here. You're welcome. Um, I think most people have have known you and, you know, see you around town, so I'm really excited to have you aboard. No question about it. Um, I'll also ask a question, since it came up about Mr. Vellati, I've stated, this is a question I have with respect to the rules. If a member is not present, but then goes and reviews the meeting online, do they still need to abstain, or can they approve the minutes if they've watched the meeting online?
Generally, I don't think they should be abstaining.
You want to throw that conversation, you're out. Okay. We kind of always do that, that we do that. Somebody brought that to my attention recently, that if they had gone online and looked at it, could they in fact say they saw the meeting? But, thank you, we'll use that from here on, that has been awesome. Thank you.
I don't know if it's different than that, understanding.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, you can get back to me later, you know, but it just kind of came up in the last week or two about that, because everybody abstains, so I just thought I'd ask. Um, any, any discussion on the meeting minutes? Okay, with that, I'll try your mind, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the financial report. Brad?
All right, so if you look at the summary sheet there, obviously it looks pretty glaring that water department looks like it's in a deficit of one point five million dollars. We have spent that, you know, double sided, just growing out, one point eights, one point eight million dollars on capital improvement. So that's the only reason that we're in a deficit position. Um, it's all the first from well stuff. Uh, we are getting closer to getting the all the loan documents done, um, and then once we get that loan finalized, we will start uh, getting some of that money back from the state. Um, and then that will clear that up. Uh, so we're not really in a deficit at all because of the Burge Run project. Um, for sewer, it's a time issue with the time of when the debt is due for sewer. So the sewer has a loan. So, uh, the debt service for sewer is just under one point one million dollars for the whole year, but the timing of when the loans are due, we've already paid out nine hundred fifty thousand of that. So, if you straight line the one point one million, we'd only spend five hundred thousand or so in the first five months. Um, so then we'd be in a surplus position. You know, those, our debt service is almost fully paid for the year. We just have one more payment of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. A hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, so that's why that's in the deficit position, and I think we talk about that every year because those loans are always due at the same time, I figure. Um, so, other than that, um, I'm sure Tom reviewed it too, but everything's kind of right in line with where we expected the this far into the year.
So Brad, just so I understand, prior year, we thought that eight hundred and twenty-two thousand roughly. This year we're at six thirty-five because the water bills just come out and we're still collecting.
Yeah, the collectives are down, so even on the general public level, um. So I gotta all the things that more, because that's a pretty glaring number, that's almost, yeah, die at two hundred thousand, you know. Yeah, a lot of that. Um, I know the bills just came out, and the timing of when they pay. And some people get their bill and they run in right away and pay, and some people go, this thing's not due for thirty days, why would I run into my money?
I just think that's something we should look at next month, right?
Yeah.
Agreed, man, that's, that's pretty important to see what's going on there.
Yeah.
One, one of the issues too was when the, there was some confusion when the bills went out. The uh, the new company kind of screwed up the bill, and there was a lot of confusion about at the beginning of what people owed, and so they were working that through. Yeah, maybe so, you, you'd see it almost looks like you owed like a large sewer assessment or the way the billing, the work, it was all screwy over there. So that could have caused some confusion for some folks, so we'll work that out, Paula, to see, you know, if we're on top of it. We have a new vendor. Any other discussion? Okay, I move we accept the financial report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you oppose? Motion carries. Yes, we can review the invoices. If we have two, do you want to go through them, or?
Uh, you can do your, you know, yeah, how you're gonna ask for the motion, I guess.
Oh yeah, so I, yeah, I move we accept the uh, the two invoices, um, in a total of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars and fifty-one stacks. Okay, for discussion, we have one from what, Red Pierce, Burge Run Well, and Kovacs. Also, yeah.
No real surprises, they're gonna work instead of the on Burge. Uh, we did get a bunch of stored material, which is part of that Kovacs bill, where some of the tankage for the filter system and the piping and stuff, it's now stored, they've gone there as stored material. And the Red Pierce is their typical, you know, we have the full-time inspector and shop term reviews and, uh, you know, request for information, various things that come up between the contractor and, and the engineer.
No more surprises, I think we're looking good on budget.
Uh, so far, so good, yeah. Um, there, there's we're, we're looking at a change order for um, a couple of hydrants, one on the raw water side, one on the finished water side, so they gave us a number. We're, we're still looking at that in terms of uh, what might be appropriate. But so far, the change order number has been relatively low. I have always the contingency, um, four hundred ninety-nine thousand. Five percent of the uh, of the bid.
I want to ask here, on this first one, the first one we have, it was a change, right, for seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
No, no, that's, that's a, that's, that's the payment due, the seven eighty-eight is
The payment due for the month.
For the month. Which includes their labor and materials and stored materials.
I do want to, you said a change order summary on the left-hand side from?
Um, yeah, that, well, down at the bottom there, yeah, and that, you'll see that number shows up up top, you got the original contract sum.
Right.
And then the change orders total up there, so there's your new contract.
That one we approved.
Yeah, the, these, those, those were like the first, I think they were, maybe five or six.
All right. Yeah. Oh, all right. Just going back to the hydrants.
Yeah.
Were those in the bid and we had to change something with them, or were they not in the bid at all?
They, one was not, so I think it's a good idea that we do have one on the finished water line coming out of a plant. We had a hydrant down at where it ties into the road, but if you're starting up the plant, you may want to kind of blow that off right there. Especially you, you have a spot where you can blow it off, as opposed to doing it in the road. The other one was, it was in there, it was a yard hydrant, it was a little on the small side, and the, the well can put out, you know, a fair amount of water, so that was changing out that to a regular standard hydrant.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any new business? Director's report?
Okay, um, I got a couple of things, uh, one of interest, eighty-two Payne Road is along the west ends, the left west side of Payne Road, which is a property in Danbury. We have a two thousand and eight interlocal agreement between Danbury and Bethel for, I don't know, eight or ten properties in a total of like twenty-one thousand gallons per day. So, part of the stipulations with that agreement, they needed to put in like a holding tank and, and dose the flow so that they would be discharging between midnight and six A M. I'm not quite sure why that might have been a Danbury requirement, and that they didn't, they wanted to get the flows off peak hours. So this application came in, the applicant is Casey Energy, there's an existing residential building on that property. Okay, so they're gonna use that as an office, they're gonna add a, a building just behind it as like a warehouse, vehicle storage, they can do maintenance. So they're basically gonna add also a, like a, a fuel oil tank and a, and a, and a one or two propane tanks. So they're, they're your typical home heating, the energy, you know, provider. Um, their daily flows were on, uh, they, they were proposing three hundred and sixty gallons per day. We've given us a thousand gallon tank. So they had the Danbury public hearing last week, I submitted comments, want to get more details on how they're going to go about uh, uh, the design of the, of the pump system, how they're gonna make sure it's gonna be between midnight and six. I, I don't think it really impacts Bethel much, whether we got it during the day or at night, but
Does it come with our allocation?
Well, it'll be, it'll be, no, it won't, it's, it's Danbury, whatever flow goes through, it won't be counted against hours, basically. Um, so public hearings continuing, I think it's into January.
I, I think Pete might have more rec life about this one that happened, but was that um, pumping station, you know, to pump it into the system long period? Uh, considering a larger building or a larger parcel, three hundred gallons a day is peanuts.
Well, they gotta pump because they're down here.
Right, right, right.
Um, I, I don't know why, I don't, it's, it's oh eight, it's way before my time, so I'm not sure exactly what the parameters were.
Gallons, and it might be pumping every other day.
It's, he came up with, I think, eighteen employees, twenty gallons per person per day. There'll be probably most days when they're not gonna use that much.
Right.
So
They gotta put a tank in anyways.
They, well, I think they're gonna use the septic tank that they got. Uh, there's an existing septic, there's an existing well, so I think they're gonna use the tank as their holding tank, and um
Is the house currently on the, the house in the garage currently on the?
It's on the septic.
It's on the septic, okay.
They're not tied in, we left laterals when we put the, when we put the sewer mains in, so we know, we knew this was all coming, and now he's here.
So make sure I understand this, interlocal agreement, they put the sewer lines in, these guys have never hooked up yet.
Correct.
Now they're hooking up.
Yes.
We think three hundred gallons per day.
That's the, the estimate for what they're, they're gonna use there.
And then once they, we do the estimate, that will come out of our allotment, even though it's pumping through our system.
Correct, it's kind of like that, uh, Newtown, the Newtown flows
Yeah.
Flow through us, but we, you know, we get a credit back, and there's, part of that agreement also had, um, uh, Coal Pit Hill area in Danbury.
Okay.
Um, some of their flows get into directly into our Paul Street Station, and again, we get a credit back on, on what those flows are. And that agreement also had, um, how we tied the water system in up the hill on the summit. We have an emergency connection in the pump station up, up there for the lines that feed their, um, crow's nest tanks. So that agreement was all kind of in one, back in oh eight.
And, do you have your hands on that agreement?
I do.
Might just send me a copy.
I will, and we, we have a couple of other agreements along the way, obviously the one, the big one that established our two million gallons a day. Um, and you, you know, from the different, from the three different zones. Um, so yeah, there's a couple of different agreements, which I can get you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just saves me time, doesn't take it too late for you to shoot.
Yeah. In fact, I mean, one of, one of my items here, as long as we're going through Danbury, um, I did speak recently with David Day. Um, you know, you, you don't get a whole lot of definitive or, you know, specifics, the project is nearly complete. So it's kind of pressing upon him, you know, we're gonna need to know timing, as much as what the dollars are gonna be, we need to know the timing of, we can't just get a bill and it's due thirty days later, you know, so you gotta communicate with us as well as the other towns. Um, the bill for this fiscal year, we haven't, I haven't seen yet, I usually got something from their people like in October. So he's, yeah, I gotta work on that, yeah, okay, you gotta work on that. Um, so I just had that brief conversation with respect to that, I was thinking, Dan, maybe an idea to, um, if you haven't, maybe you reach out, at some point you might want to reach out to the Danbury mayor, as a, you know, kind of meet and greet. And that might be a topic to say, hey, you know, we'd like to come see the new plant, we kind of joked, and he says, yeah, you, you, I, I said, you know, we wanna maybe get a tour so we can see, he goes, yeah, you probably want to see what you bought, and that we, that we actually built something. I joked, I said, yeah, you didn't just put up a facade with a new plant, you know?
Yeah, he, um, he actually referred to all this in his, uh, was a state of the city address. That this was all coming.
Okay.
You know, the new plan and all that, and he claims that we're gonna be getting together, so it's all.
Okay.
But you know.
Okay, I know several, a few years ago, before they actually started the construction, when they still went out to bid and the bids came back real big, and they decided to, you know, you know, no, you know, withdraw all the bids. They were talking at the time, Brad, you may, may recall, maybe not, they were looking at having each town kind of go and get their own financing. And I know Matt wasn't in agreement with that, and I, I think they talked further, and it, again, I don't know the, the full details, but what was then agreed to was, I think Danbury was gonna go get the financing, basically, and then whether we have to go get our own to pay them off, I don't know exactly how the mechanism is gonna work, but
Yeah, at, at one point, Danbury wanted the other towns to like, once a year go out and get the financing for whatever portion of that year. And then Matt and everybody else said, no, we're not doing that, because it's painting the budget to do packages all the time. But this is, so then Danbury said, fine. So Danbury's been carrying all the cost for it, but at some point that bill's gonna come to them.
It's gonna, it's gonna roll back to all the users anyway.
And I'm sure if you get set up a tour, then I'm sure the commission members will like see it too.
Well, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was saying.
So Brad, Brad, are we gonna pay, I mean, obviously Danbury has a bond on this. Are we gonna pay our allotment of the bonds to Danbury? Or is Danbury gonna say, your portion of the plant is twenty million was your portion of the construction project? We want, you know, because I mean, it's kind of scary, we don't have an idea what they're gonna
Well, at one point, at one point, Brandon, they had mentioned, and, you know, nothing in writing, that our share would be about sixteen percent.
And what was the total possible profit?
A hundred and
Well, that's The bid, the bids they got were on the hundred and eleven, hundred and twelve million dollars, and they said no, so they then got out of like how on water we go through the state with the drinking water state revolving fund, they decided, all right, we're not doing this, so they were not doing it through the clean water fund. They decided to kind of, um, do a design build, so they got their engineer, their contractor, and a construction manager, and they kind of designed it as they went. What I understand is they had previously bonded the, um, design work for like ten million. The, I think the cost of the project was gonna be on the order of seventy-five million, so with a total of around eighty-five, eighty-six, and I think they're still right around that number, so that's gonna be the total number. And, and then our percentage is two million a day out of the design flow of twelve. Which was like sixteen point sixty-seven percent.
The design flow was fifteen. Would they go, okay?
I think they've reduced it over time, and in fact, I don't know that this is finalized yet, I think Brookfield had been, as we know, was looking for additional allocation. They're working something out with Danbury where, um, I think their phosphorus removal is, is meeting the requirements that they need to, so they may be able to put more throughput through the plant. So they've got to alter their N P D E S permit, and they may get that approved for an extra two hundred thousand a day. So in my mind, that would bring the total design flow to twelve point two, which would then, I think, lower our percentage. We'd be now two out of twelve point two, it might be, you know, fifteen point nine, or six, anyway, we're in the sixteen percentage, you know, ballpark.
I mean, we're still looking at almost fifteen, sixteen, nine, like Brad.
Well, if, if it's eighty-six, you get fifteen percent of it, we're probably thirteen, doing another dumb head, but yeah. Um, it's been eerily quiet from them of how and when they're gonna lock their mind. And I remember asking the finance director a year ago, going, when are we gonna get some answers on that? Oh, I'll get back to you.
Again, that's why I mentioned maybe, Dan, if you reached out to the mayor, maybe if you reached back out to their finance people.
And I don't know if they're gonna, if they bonded the whole thing, are they gonna just want us to pay our portion yearly to be buying with us? Because then we don't have to incur the cost of doing the bond on their own. And sewer has money. So yeah, I'll reach out to, could Dan's the finance director and ask him what's going on with that.
You got a, you got a question?
Uh, years ago, we had a discussion with Danbury, reference to water and soil, and they were talking about what's the street, sorry, metering the water from Danbury going up into there, and we discussed the water going into Burge Industrial Park, and I said, well, how come we have Danbury water going into Burge Industrial Park? He said, we have water in the work, Burge Industrial Park. I said, what do you meter that water? Well, you don't have water going, is that, what color is the city Danbury water? He said, they're yellow. Well, Burge Industrial Park, tell me you don't hide it. They're supplying water to Burge Industrial Park. And you're asking us, figure out how much water we need at West, on West Street, that we have to meter it, and you have no idea how much water is going to Burge Industrial Park. So then we got in discussion on Payne Road, that's the amount of pot here, and we're gonna figure out what the sewer allocation is gonna be out there, we gotta wait for the mail, that's just quite simple. What's the largest building you can put on each parcel and, and the maximum amount of sewer that you need to calculate the flow? If it's less, it's less, but if it meets that, and knowing, at that time, they couldn't give us an answer. Okay, and I don't, I got off the committee because the commission wanted to push the direction, so, but that's what, that's the way it was left. Okay, we really don't know exactly what the total outcome was.
I, I think, um, I, and I, I, I didn't spend a lot of time digging into it, but I think one of the, one of the items in the, um, application package, I think Danbury, the way they do their flows, it's based on their zone, and it's X number of gallons per acre.
Yeah.
So I think this Casey Energy property on the Danbury side would have been okayed for up to, and I forget the number off the top of my head, but maybe three thousand gallons a day.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there, and it's all based on acreage, so the property that's coming in, they're gonna have some guys washing hands and using the bathroom, and they've got like three hundred and sixty gallons per day is what they're proposing, but I think that's how Danbury probably came up with the twenty-one thousand gallons per day.
And, and the problem that they have right now is they're maxed out on their budgets as far as, they're, they're talking to a aquarium right now about water. Because they're hurting big time. They're gonna have, yeah, it's true, I talk to people, they're talking to a aquarium right now because their, their budget's really getting whack, because of the education and all the stuff that's going on. They have to come, and they're talking about going to aquarium. For the water to go, yeah.
Love it.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, I might want to mention real quick, we did sign the loan capital comment, anyone know for?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna mention that when we got to capital.
Oh.
For sure, I would just roll it into that.
No worries, um, so I move we accept the director's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
None.
Great. Um, all business. His first thing up is discussion of those water rates.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to put that on, just to, you know, kind of wrap up maybe the, uh, the public hearing, obviously we're in now to the board of selectmen. So the next step is board of selectmen, uh, decision on that. Um, we did have the public hearing last week, I'm guessing that all of those chairs were filled, so maybe there was a few dozen people here, between twenty and thirty perhaps. Um, I think it went, we had a good discussion, went on for maybe a good hour, hour, fifteen minutes maybe. Um, I, I got the sense that people did understand, you, you know, what we're doing and why. Um, not everyone's happy with any kind of rate increase, but, um, uh, I think for the most part, I think the discussion revolved around basically paying for the capital improvements that we've done since about twenty fourteen. So.
The, um, the, the couple of things that came out of it was, number one, the concern that we're a little bit over budget at the end of this, you know, when we were looking at those numbers, Dana, I remember you mentioned this in one of the meetings. We didn't want to come off like we were gonna have a, you know, a profit at the end. And that kind of came up in the discussion, that we were, um, what, five hundred thousand ahead?
Five, five.
Yeah.
And we have seen three percent increase in expenses.
Right, right, so there was a little bit of pushback about that, but then, um, Matt Nickerbocker was there and actually kind of reminded us that the original goal, I guess, at some point was to get to a million, and so you have something in the bank. So that, you know, that's something that the board of selectmen gets to go, we're gonna have to talk about. The other thing that came up, um, was, uh, you know, should the water utility be doing something to help people who are in need, like with rates or give it back or something like that, that came up a couple times in the discussion. And then the other part that came up was, is it fair that we have a six thousand gallon, you know, minimum threshold? Whether or not we should be, like, you know, if you have an elderly person who's using three thousand gallons, are they getting? Probably.
Do, do we have any statistics on that? You know, or when the, if it's under six thousand, they, they just get the minimum charge, but is there an actual gallon on the bill?
What, what I have is some data that, uh, I was able to figure out, you know, six thousand gallons, I think I looked and saw about twenty-five percent of our bills were the six thousand or less. I can kind of do that for other numbers, but then I can't really equate who's getting that bill. You, you know, there, some of them may be, maybe a business that's not using a lot of water versus
That, that's certainly
Um, and I, 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 if I'm, if I did this, I haven't done it in a while, but six thousand gallons a quarter, you know, it's two thousand gallons a month, that would be about sixty-six gallons per day. Um, that, that's a relatively low, you, you know, per capita usage, if you got, you know, um, two people in a home, you know, that's still not, not, not a lot of water. But I don't know at this point to, to say, hey, yeah, we should change it to this. You know, if you, if you're gonna lower that six thousand, you, you know, are you gonna keep that minimum charge the same, or is that gonna come down, and I'm, I'm not able to kind of crank out numbers for you to say what it would do, you, you know, are, are we gonna leave ourselves short, or, you know?
I guess the question is, I mean, with our, uh, with our billing system, is there a way we can get that data? And it was, if we can get a lots, and we can get an address list, we can go back and, and, you know, merge the data with other lists and probably figure out
Yeah, they, they
The demographic.
They just changed that munis system, and I, I don't think really any of us are experts, and I, I certainly haven't been, Paula knew it much better, and now that system's kind of changed, I don't know how up to date she is on it as well.
So I, I'll just kind of, I'll, I'll get the help of data, the data folks. So I I'll just kind of, I'll get the help of data, the data folks and we'll see if we can do it.
The one thing that kind of struck me in, you know, I've been thinking a lot about it was shortening the term that we're looking at. You know, whether we go three or four years, it gives us time to analyze the data at that next benchmark, maybe inflation six percent. Maybe inflation's two percent, it gets better than we thought. So personally, I think, you know, if we looked at a shorter term of rate increases and just reconvene in three years or four years, I think that, you know, we have better data going forward. And uh, you know, it doesn't really hurt anything, but our assumptions were correct, then you know, in three or four years, I don't know how long we do it for. We just say, okay, we still need the eight and a half. You know, or if inflation's through the roof and we, you know, were incorrect on our assumptions, then it ends up you need more than unfortunately, you say, all right, well, going forward, this is where we need to be. I just, I don't like setting the rates five years out and we don't really know what the landscape. You know, if we know what's gonna happen in five years, we'll be a jillionaire. You know, being able to do a lot of, a lot of things. I I I would suggest, I mean, when, you know, we all meet. Thinking about a shorter term. I'm not saying decrease the amount of the increase, you know, but maybe go out three years or four years.
And and there's nothing in statute that we talk about, there's nothing that says how far we have to go out. Ex- except that if you, if you're gonna go out, you know, you're gonna have to increase. You always want to do it one time.
I think that was the thought process in in like to the five-year increases.
I get it, you know.
No, but that did come up also in the meeting. Well, I think it it looked, it looked good because that last number was three hundred and forty-three thousand. It looked like that last year of increase was like, whoa, there's a big one. So I think that's why they wanted to chop it off.
But I think you also would have more information on what PFAS is gonna do or not sure.
PFAS and lead and copper, there may be services we have to replace that, you know, as of right now, without a a change in the lead and copper rule, we might not be changed. We might not be replaced.
You know, it's it's a double-edged sword, you know, I know we can say, well, yeah, it's easier to tolerate over the five years and then we're done. But what happens if we were wrong and in year four, we realized we're having a huge deficit and now well, we scheduled an eight and a half for year four and five, but guess what? It's now we need to raise it another four. You know, where I think most people are very smart. Right? And you explain, and again, if you want to do four years, I'm fine with four years. You want to do three years, I'm fine with three years. I just think that you're able to explain at the end of the time that this is very thoughtful. We've analyzed the past three years of data. We now know where PFAS is, we know what our obligations are gonna be on some of these other lines. Inflation was two percent higher than we expected. This is what the rate increase is gonna be going forward for the next two or three years.
Yeah, and then we work on our capital plan too for, you know, waterline replacements and stuff, so.
Now, we're putting on the readers now, right? You're working on that. Have have the rates dropped? I mean, we're doing estimated meters like three hundred or something like that. How much revenue have we generated with the new readers? Have we, has the, has the rate dropped? The usage dropped or has it increased?
I I don't have an answer on that. Yeah, I I don't, I don't have any. Uh, looking at those specific accounts.
No, I mean, yeah, say, we we got X amount of meters out there, they're charging three hundred dollars a quarter and we put readers in. How much has it dropped from that three hundred dollars that quarter, what's that quarter is now?
I recognize that Brian hit my uh, some of the cellies.
I would just like, you know, when we're done talking about the meters, maybe to get you know, these two gentlemen's opinions on how far the rates go out because, you know, when we meet, that way we have some.
You can have a recommendation.
I mean, if the whole utility commission says, you know what, maybe it makes sense to do three or four years when we meet. We can say that we came back as a board and we discussed this and everyone was in agreement. You know, we have Brad here. You know, we have.
Well, I, I think we can certainly make a recommendation at this point. I don't know what standing that has since it's already now in the purview of board of selectmen. But we as a group, I think, can make a recommendation based on what we've heard in public hearing. And then just, we have to see if the board of selectmen has to kick it back to. If we change it dramatically, I believe it's in the board of selectmen's purview to do that.
I think it's just the term, not the Yeah, I mean, I think you know, we're, we're agreeing to this for the next three years. We think this is a sound plan for the next three years.
So I think
year three will reevaluate and decide what the next two or three years is gonna be.
I think to your point though, as a group, I think as a PUC, we can make that recommendation of now.
You can make a part of the discussion and I don't know that it has to be a motion. It could just be input in this meeting for the board of selectmen to consider at the next meeting.
Well, it it literally can be, um, I I believe we could, we could make a motion that we make a recommendation. So in a form of communication, so in the board's second meeting, we come in as communication based on the public hearing. Just make it all world.
I mean, do you guys agree with a little bit shorter?
Yeah, I I I like the idea of four years and I I don't think three, I think we're getting shorter on three, but I I support four years.
But how are we getting short is, we're really not doing anything. We're just saying at year three. You know, anytime you come up with a plan, right? One of the most important things of plan is to analyze it and make adjustments and see where you're at. So if we stop it at three years. We're really not hurting ourselves in any way, cause we're gonna see where we were on that five-year trajectory anyway. We said, okay. In year three, this is where we were gonna be. If we're way under, right? We know we need to make an adjustment. If we are skyrocketed up, well then maybe we say, you know, we can knock a percent off and, you know, whatever. I mean, I would really say a three year, is, I mean, who knows if we'll be in office three years from now, because we're every two years. But what I'm saying is, is it doesn't bother me to reconvene in three years and say, hey, cause we still have those five-year numbers. Right? And the three-year mark really gives us two solid years, two and a half years of data to say. Cause we know year two, we're predicting to be in a deficit, if I recall correctly, it was like a hundred and eleven thousand. Yeah, somewhere around there, we're gonna be into the deficit. In year three, we're gonna be coming out of that deficit. So I would say, you know, I I would look for the support to say, let's go three years out and that way we could make a very sound decision based on that.
No, I think it comes with a commitment to get a better long-term plan on what's going on too. I mean, our numbers get pretty fuzzy after a couple of years. It's like, well, we don't know if we're gonna have any projects. But somehow we have to get that information together in order to shorten it because you know, it's, it's just logical that you would want to know where you're gonna be four years out and five years out, whether you have the percentages in there or not. You still wanna know. And I think that's something we lack here is we don't have a real good long-term plan other than, you know, water main replacements.
Yeah, we certainly know the capital, those things, we don't know what you don't know. To your point with the changes with PFAS and some of those things are gonna be.
Which give me huge numbers, right? And we could have decent grant opportunities in that. Bergstrom Wells not online. The first and only test we did. The numbers for PFAS were less than what they're proposing as a contaminant level.
Right.
So we may buy ourselves time by living off of Bergstrom while then we you you know, maybe save up, maybe you you do that PFAS project for Maple a little bit further out. The numbers I'm getting so far for the testing we've done for Maple, one of the wells has been under four, the other well's been over four. So can you, uh, again, without knowing where that is gonna really sit. Um, it's hard to, for me to budget out three years, we're gonna spend X number of million on PFAS. Well, but you're, you're not gonna spend it that quick anyways. We we know how regulations work, right? They're gonna pose them, it'll be three years. And it'll be four years before they have to be implemented. So I think those are really long-term. Yeah, I'm talking a little bit more short-term. You know. How are, are our equipment doing? How is the capital working? You know, what, what do we need manpower wise? There are things that I don't think we lay out in a very good long-term plan.
So it sounds like there's a real appetite for short. And before we kind of make a motion or move on that, the one, you still had a question on with respect to, I guess, the meters and the rates, was you, were you satisfied by the meter question?
I was just wondering, I know they can't figure it out, but if you're, if you're going three hundred dollars a quarter, then the reader goes in and drops down to ninety-five dollars a quarter. That's the amount of money that you had out, if you got seven hundred out, you estimate it was three hundred dollars a quarter. It's in the drop down hat to a hundred fifty, you're losing that revenue. So I mean, that's gotta be anticipated, that's all.
It could go the other way too, you know, cause someone actually approached me when I was out saying, you know, I was on an estimated reading. They changed my meter and my bill went up, I guess, but they're using more water than they thought. So I mean, it it goes, it goes both ways. Oh, you never know.
Typically, which way do the meters fail?
Which way do you fail?
Yeah.
Well, the MIUs are just the MIUs are failing. The batteries are going dead, we're not getting the reading. Zero reading or So they're looking back then at past usage and coming up with an estimate. Based on what the, what their past history was.
So would it be beneficial to figure out how many of these estimated meters that we have? And have somebody come in and do it?
What, come up with the estimates?
Well, yeah, we've talked about that, we'll probably get that in the uh, in the utility supervisor's report again.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. All right.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing them ourselves. Yeah, no, no.
Nobody's questioning what you're doing.
No, I know, that, that's what we've been doing at this point. We've been buying the material and we've been installing.
Yeah, we're saying is, if you bring somebody and just concentrate on doing it, you're gonna get done fast because you're not working outside of it now.
Sure, true.
Right?
So um
How do you integrate the flow data with the ones you've replaced?
If you, if it's okay, I'll tell you what, let's um, let's table that for a moment and and we're getting that utility supervisor. That's okay, cause that's what we're gonna talk about, is a replacement of the meters, is that okay? So um, where we stand right now with the appetite to go for a shorter we'll say short-term or a three-year, I think, sounds reasonable. Um, I would make a motion that the public utility commission um, through correspondence to the board of selectmen, recommend that they do a three-year rate uh increase. And then more discussion?
Uh, just if I can ask Brad, what do you think of those three years? You're the money man. Looking at the the rate, the eight and a half for three years at a four percent increase in expenses, but which right now isn't unreasonable based on how expensive everything is right now. The total of the three years with the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in capital project is like thirty thousand to the good. So it's pretty much break even, you're not making any headway over the three years. But to your point, Brian, you do have a lot more information three years from now, I think this committee has then promised to be diligent about two and a half years from now looking at rates again. Because the cost of by us not doing rate increases for the last two years is huge.
I don't think anyone's saying that we don't. I mean, again, I don't know about you on this committee, but I'm assuming you'll still be uh, you know, here, I don't know how long Tom wants to be here or, you know. I'm sure one of the three people sitting in the room could remind the committee to an ad, two years, the the beginning of January saying, hey, guys. You know, this has gotta be number one on your agenda that, you know, we need this hammered out and start early rather than like and I think everyone would, would agree with that, I mean.
Honestly, I think it should be something that Tom looks at every year. And just, we do this exercise every year, even though we have a locked-in rate. I think it's something that would make sense to me. At the end of every fiscal year.
As a, for instance, if you want to change out, say, a thousand MIUs, um, I'm not sure what a contractor is gonna charge us for that. But you would need a good influx of money that's probably not in here right now to do that.
Assuming four percent.
Well, and it's three four percent, remember, we have done all this based on three percent, which
Well, this is
I don't buy, by the way.
I said, we'd have, we'd get thirty-three in the good. So we're breaking, say, three percent, what do I wanna do with three percent?
Well, everything else when we were in the, in the uh, public hearings were based on three percent. And at the end of the well, at the end.
So we go to one fifty-four, if the assumption that we used for this whole thing were one fifty-four to the good at the end of three years, if inflation, you know, levels out at three percent.
And that does include two hundred and seventy thousand dollars within the capital stuff, so.
Yeah, so I I I feel pretty comfortable going three years out and you know, there's nothing that's gonna stop us next year from saying, how did we do year one? Let's see what, what, what was inflation? How are we looking? Is inflation trending down? Maybe we got lucky and inflation drops down into the twos and we do even better over the three years and you know. How, how much are we in, are we still in the deficit? Do how much do we, do we still owe the town money? So, yeah, I mean, that, you know.
So this, this loan agreement that we just signed is gonna give us cash that we spent in prior years. The design work that we did with Wright Pierce is rolled into this loan. So we're gonna get an influx beyond what we are spending on Wright Pierce this year and Kovacs this year, so.
Yeah, but the three hundred grand number, the last closed fiscal year the water owed like nine hundred thousand dollars. But I took that down like the six hundred thousand in Wright Pierce. But yeah, it's because of the way the loans and stuff the due, due, due from what's owed, it just jumps around. Um, but hopefully PFAS isn't a problem for us and we don't have to do any huge capital projects going forward. That should really, that calm all that down and we'll have a real number all the time. That's not what you do. Yeah, well, like Zeno said, it's gonna take years for that.
Yeah, but you do have to plan for it. There, there's no doubt, my money, it is gone. It's in your five-year planning period for sure, so I just, I can't say today, you know, and put it in this. So going to the three years, again, that would be the time we're gonna probably have better information. And maybe after two years, we're gonna have a better number to say, hey, the eight and a half that we thought we've gotta go up because PFAS is gonna be X.
Or we could go down because everything is rose here.
And you never know. Honestly, I think best practice would be we do three-year rate studies anyway. Five is a long time. If you think about where we were five years ago versus where we are now. Nobody knew anything about COVID, nobody knew about supply chain issues, you know, like.
You know, we're still building in the hundred dollar square foot range five years ago, you know, a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty square foot now.
So, so we um, we have to have a motion on the table then for the three years, the recommendation, um, I'll turn your minds, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, um, let's talk about the PUC capital projects summary, please.
Okay, uh, well, really, it's, it's Bergstrom, uh. I was gonna mention the loan, we did finally receive from the state, the uh, loan subsidy agreement. They did put in what they had told me some months ago, so our subsidies are a little over two point eight million. Which leaves a loan amount of seven point eight million, which is, again, is what I was figuring on. So that's been signed, it'll go in tomorrow's mail. Typically, I'll get it back signed from the commissioner, you know, thirty days from now, forty-five days from now. Once that's back, then we're in a position to start requesting reimbursements. Um, but I'm also at the point now where uh, the one point six million grant we're gonna get from EPA. I think the auditor wanted us to keep it within this fiscal year, like I said. He didn't want me to use the May or June invoices. So since July, we, we've exceeded the two million dollars that EPA was gonna let, give us one point six million. So I'll be able to apply for that here in, in the next week. So a a one point six in, in one fell swoop should hopefully
We gotta circle back to him to see how he closed out the books.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll do that with you before I submit anything. Uh, and as far as work goes out there, they've been working steadily, uh, work includes uh the under the footing and and floor slab piping, uh, they've done some concrete pours for puddings and foundation walls. Um, they uh piped up the connection from the plant to the backwash source tank and they've been backfilling that tank. The filtration system and a bunch of the equipment has been delivered. Uh, the project electrician is starting to mobilize, they've been bringing in equipment. So pretty soon the electricians will be there, you know, steadily. Continuing to make progress. Continuing to make progress between what Kovacs has to submit and what Wright Pierce has to approve for all the materials. That's ongoing and, um, that's about it.
You know who the electrician is?
Um, EES, Electrical Energy Systems at, I think, Southington. They were the engineer when we did a plant upgrade in Norwalk, um, and, and they, my experience with them was that they're good, so.
That's it, okay, utility supervisor's report?
Yeah, sir, I'll start on the shore side, uh, we had to put a new pump in at the summit, uh, that small sewage, uh, pumping station. Uh, it's been in effect for probably seven years, it's, uh, one of the pumps, um, that one of the bearings actually seized on the shaft. So we ordered a new pump, it got, it was, we, uh, installed it. Uh, I wanna let it go for a couple of weeks, make sure there's no issues, and I wanna pull the other one and send that out to be, uh, cleaned, it went through, make sure that the bearings are in good shape. Um, it's a very low flow station, really not that concerned, but it's got a, it's got a pretty good yield. Um, but I do wanna get that, that second station, like I say, it's, it's been going with no issue for. But I'm pretty sure it's seven years since it got put into effect, maybe even a little bit more. Uh, but now that they're completed, they're at their max up there at the summit, so we're, um. Uh, like I say, after the holiday, we're gonna pull that one out and, uh, and send it up to like the equipment, have to go through it. Uh, one of the grinders, uh, again, that's, that's been going non-stop, both of the grinders at Ball Street. Uh, one of the gearbox started to make some noise, so as PM, we, uh, we replaced that. Uh, and we do have an extra, uh, gearbox, so it should happen again, we're, we're in good shape there, the, the gearbox is relatively cheap. Uh, and we're also getting ready to do our, our quarterly cleaning in all of our stations, getting out any solids, uh. Like I said, we're doing that every two years, I mean, every, excuse me, every three months, uh, just to keep up on it. Uh, we've been in pretty good shape by putting in some, uh, some degreaser in the stations, but we still have solids that we take out. Now, as for the water side, uh, getting into about the MIUs. Um, Paula put notices on all the bills that went out, that if they have an estimated read to Paul and make an appointment. It's been working out very well, we began four and five of them. Uh, a day just through appointments, because some of the MIUs are inside the homes, some of, uh, some of them are not. Uh, but we're also, between those, we're also doing high reads, uh. I, I, over here at the, at the, uh. Uh, the crossings, a lot of leaking toilets, people are in a panic about it, they got these five, six hundred thousand dollar homes and the toilets are leaking. So we, you know, we've had to take the time to go in there and, uh, and dye the toilets, just so they can see what the issues are. Uh, but, you know, that's also on our agenda. Uh, but we're getting good results, having the appointments and still working list whenever we can. My suggestion after listening, you know, listening tonight. Is maybe go for an RFP to see if there's any concerns out there that would change out these MIUs, I mean. There's a lot of them, we're making a dent in them. Uh, I think this, in this, in this, uh, half official year, we've probably gotten. I'd say we probably got three, a little over three hundred of them out of the way, plus, you know, other ones that need to be done. Uh, I, I, the thing is, I don't know who to turn to for something like this, is this a plumber's job? It's, it's basically. You're dealing with telephone wires, really all it is, I, I don't, um. I don't know whether it's a plumber, I don't know whether it's an electrician, I don't know whether it's an alarm person to do something like this. Um, whether there's a concern out there that will, that we can ensure, uh, to, or they can insure themselves, I'm sorry. Uh, but I, I would suggest that we put out, put out an RFP and see, and see what they, um. Who, who, who even.
Who responds to it?
You know, I mean, I even, I mean, this is, this is probably reaching, but I even thought of going one of the vocational schools. As a project for, for them, um, you know, you're getting into insurance and stuff like that, but. Or I should say liability, but I think it's, I think we. If we, we need to get these done, we need to get a lot of them done, and I think that would be the route to take, I mean, we're, we're making a dent in them, but. There's, like I say, it's not just the estimated reads, the high reads, the, uh. Uh, the leaky meters, they, you know, we don't have a lot of leaky meters, there, there's nothing wrong with the meters, it's usually. It's usually, uh, something with the MIUs or wires have been clipped or they've been pinched in the wall. Um, you know, very, very seldom do we get anything wrong with the bodies of the meters or the meter heads, it's the MIUs that we're having problems with now. So, I, I, I don't know how you wanna handle it, I don't know whether it's worth some, put something to a trade, uh, trade magazine, uh, and everybody's looking for work. Uh, I, I just, like I say, I don't know who, what would be the expertise.
Order to really understand that, though, we need to know, how many do we have? How many do we, do we know that have bad readings, either suspect readings, too low or too high? Do we have that data?
If I look at, yeah, we have a list, I mean, I can look at the list, we probably have fifteen hundred out there right now.
Can I see a list someday? Sure, you know, I'd also like to see our written PM program.
On, on that, there's no written PM program, it's. They were all installed and, and now they're all failing.
Yeah, they're all failing, they're all installed at the same time.
And they were all installed at the same time.
Are the majority of the MIUs are failing, so they've gone past their twenty-year life expectancy.
The, the one thing that is helpful in, you know, in planning is. The thing I don't like about doing them all at once is you set yourself up down the road to do them all at once. You know, that's not necessarily, how, was it take about fifteen, twenty minutes to change one of these up?
Yeah, once you, once you get into homes, it's, or, to the property, it doesn't take long unless we need an appointment.
Yeah.
And then we have to find them.
I mean, you, you talked about the trade, I'm, I'm almost wondering if, if you got a competent. Instruction crew, person who works a, and, and gets laid off in the winter time. And you know he's good, cause you've seen him repairing mains and you've seen him, you've seen what he can do, it's almost like. Having a, a couple of guys like that, that you can just say, hey, we'll hire you for February and March, or January and February. And they can, again, you gotta pick somebody you can trust.
Appointments, that's, you know, I could come to you and say, I'm gonna, I could do a thousand in a year, but if only eighty people make appointments, it doesn't really matter. That, that's, that's the issue.
Right, I will tell you that the girls are very good in their.
Like a retired electrician or something, but, you know, you gotta put the feelers out there.
Lots are all cordless or wireless now, and, you know, some of these little time, um, alarm people, I mean, that's what they did, they ran the wires from windows.
Thanks, mine's not wireless, it's getting jammed, you're making me feel bad, right?
Yeah, wait, why couldn't you hire a part-time person?
Wait, the, I think the question is who?
No, no, what I'm saying is, City of Danbury, they have part-time guys plowing in the winter time. They bring the contractors in, they're part-time, they pay no insurance, they have their own truck, they do their thing, they're part-time. Yeah, you know, you can have two part-time people do it.
Yeah, no, I.
A part-time with the town.
Yeah, I think you'd almost have to, I don't know if doing that RFP makes sense, because it's hard to know how many. You can't know the timeframe of it, right? So then it's hard to lock a company to lock in, I think you could hire, you could find some part-time people to do it. That'd be great, cause then they fall under our insurance. Instead of paying a premium.
Unless, unless the union, you know, the union has to agree.
Correct.
To people doing their work.
I was just about to say, yeah, because we, the other thing is you probably have to our guys train them. So, and that's when the, then the union's gonna be.
Believe it or not, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the overtime in the long run, and say, if guys wanna work on a Saturday, we have eight appointments. I'm being honest with you, we've been through the process, a lot of times, you know, when I worked for the municipality, sometimes it was just cheaper.
Why don't we direct them to come up with a plan?
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we, we've been down this road a long time.
Yeah, I mean, their first couple of months, we told you how many we were doing, I don't know if we have a number for this past month or last couple of months.
Right now, we think ballpark fifteen hundred are on the.
I would say the list is probably fifteen hundred.
Is the issue getting the appointment? Because we, we could also, from the town's perspective, we could increase how we promote. Like, look at your bill, if you've got it, you know, you could be paying more or less for your water.
Well, that's what's worked out good is, is Paula put in a list.
The, the note, yeah, Paula came to me and said, hey, you know, can we put a note on it? I'm like, yeah, let, let's do it.
Okay, but I'm saying, if we generate more, can our guys get it done? With the overtime, like he said, cause that's the question. If it's, if we don't have the bodies, then, then we have to come up with a different plan at this point.
Yeah, if, if, if we could get more appointments, I, I think the guys would wanna do it, you know, at least, you know, a couple of guys.
But, but, let's, let's get our heads together and then, and kind of figure out what we got.
The time, the time you have, you're taking away the normal activity you've got. Yeah, right, they're taking away their normal job. To go there.
So the other guys got to fill the cap.
I think if we were gonna go the route of trying to look at doing, hire somebody part-time. Brian's point, you'd have to approach the unions later, before you get down that.
And these guys are already on our workers' comp, they're already on our, our payroll, there's.
We were using some Saturdays, uh, you know, I, I guess we haven't stayed religious about every Saturday, get somebody, but.
Okay, so, so why don't we do this? If, if we're going, if we're gonna consider outside help, which I think we're to that point. We've been around and around about this, we, we've gotta look at outside help, whether it's gonna be part-time, contract, whatever, um. Through Phyllis and HR, let's talk, let's talk to the union, let's talk to the union. And see if, what their thoughts are, where their head is, if there's any opening to this, if we've gotta do a NOU, that's gonna be a no. Let's just start finding out, so, let's get our heads together and let's look for some outside help, so we can actually just get through it. On meantime, if from the town side, we can promote this in a small campaign. And we can actually target those folks who have our, have our water downtown.
I think your update, maybe you can make that one of your. You can remind people that, hey, on their water bills that they just got. And then give them that explanation.
Exactly, and that picks up a good group of people, but then, yeah, we also have the ability with, with Emma and social media, we can actually target. Downtown, we can target the people who are customers and they'll pop up on Facebook and they'll pop up all kinds of places, so we can put something together, drive the appointments.
That starts out with, well, if the people call us, we can set up an appointment, that's out of your control. So you have to have a, a different mechanism. Of saying, we're gonna target this group of people, we're gonna target that group of people, we'll make the phone calls, we'll make the appointments, we can't. But then control our plan, if we had somebody on the, on the hook, like you say, a part-timer. And, uh, like, like, uh. Brian was saying, well, what if we don't get the appointments? There's enough outside registers that they can do between appointments, that, that wouldn't be an issue, but. Yeah, um, that I will tell you, I mean, we, we can, we can work the list that way. You know, when the guys are, they're available, they go, they'll take a list and they go street by street, where. If you got a part-timer just dedicated to doing that, even if it's four hours a day. They can, they can put a lot of them, but I, I never even thought about the union side of it, but. I always understood that as long, I don't think you could hire them as temporary help. Like, I don't know whether it would have to be some sort of a sub or not, but from, just listening to the guys with the union. They talk about, uh, as long as everyone is working. You, you know, if, if they're not, like, if, if we're giving it to them on overtime, okay, now we're taking their overtime away, so if we're putting it, these other guys, um. Uh, if we're taking their overtime away, but to, um, you bring a part-timer in, that's not gonna affect their overtime. Nor affect their daily, um, activity, I, I think we'd be all right, but again, you gotta check with Phyllis, you know, she's definitely our person on that.
Okay, cause originally, originally when you put them in, you had a subcontractor come in and do them all.
As far as I know, that was before me, but I think it was.
I would think so.
Yeah, so, it was, uh, our guys didn't put them in originally, and they could've squawked about that.
This was the meter and the MI, the whole, the whole thing got done.
So I think we were kind of in alignment, really, having a discussion, um, is there anything else with respect to the super?
The only other thing, um, we did have a communication issue, uh, it's kinda on again, off again, between the wells and Eureka. Uh, they found a problem with one of the patrol panels that had sent out, worked on, and now we're, uh, we're back up and running with that, uh. And other than that, the backflow testing is, is just about complete, uh, and that, that's really about it, the big thing is these MRUs.
Okay.
Hey, Kelly, how much water did you get that fire?
Not much, no, no, I, they were on both hydrants, but they didn't flow a lot of water. Uh, the only thing that, um, I did ask Justin Monday morning to check the, check the charts, he said there was like two glitches. And, and usually that's probably just. Opening a hydrant and filling it, you know, the, the initial thing, but, uh, there was not. We, we had no problems, the pumps didn't speed up, they didn't drop down. Uh, they had a hydrant in the front, hydrant in the back, and they had enough ladder trucks to pick up the building.
I, I asked Galliford, he said the guy who was manning the, the pumper truck, he said we stayed at eighty PSI the whole time.
I ran a dust in the back, but, uh, yeah, and they knocked it right down.
Yeah, very, not what you would expect, no, they didn't build you a lot of water, just there initially.
But she was ready to go.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it was a good save, whatever they did, it was a good save.
All right, so, um.
Uh, they're taking me out right now, I had one of them get there by a car, I got one at the end of the anti-air. Um, matter of fact, I just got the extension for the one-on-one terrorists, and I'd like to get that done before the snowballs hit him and knock him over again.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, utility supervisor's report, all in favor? Hey, folks, seeing none, motion carries, uh, entertain emotional adjournment? All in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned at.